Ready? It's six fifty-five, so called order the Culver Town Council meeting for Tuesday, March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Call please.
William Clevenger.
President.
Bill Giffins.
Here.
Bill Hamm.
Here.
Sally Retardi.
Here.
Rich West.
President. All stand up for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This point, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being broadcast via Microsoft Teams. It is being recorded. Participation in the meeting is your consent to being recorded and to the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. Recorded meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Now, everyone in the room and or online, please mute your phone during this meeting. Thank you. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the February twenty-second minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll move in the approval of the February twenty-second minutes amended.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion been made by Rich, seconded by Bill Hamm, the approval of the February twenty-second, twenty-two minutes is amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Next is approved, is there a motion to approve the February financial report?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, seconded by Rich West to approve the February financial report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Well, since you all probably know by now, there was the rezoning of four fifteen Lake Shore was pulled by the owners, so we will not be having a public hearing or the first reading of the ordinance. Next, we need to talk about Laura Walls.
I wrote down to see if they were gonna come to the meeting. They are addressing the contract. They have a board meeting on Thursday, so they prefer to wait till after their board reviews the contracts to meet with us, so that they are not going to be here tonight.
Okay. I noted that we have a pending bill from Martian County Economic Development Corp. for our first installment, which is due March thirty-first, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. The total amount we committed to this year in the budget was ten thousand dollars. Is there a mo- I'm recommending that we go ahead and not pay this bill at this time since Laura has not fulfilled one of the obligations about being here.
We don't have a current contract that is here with them, but only can pay.
So.
Except the former contract.
It's in the budget.
Did it have a, yeah, with the former contract, did it have kind of a crossover thing?
An Evergreen?
Yeah. So you're correct, we don't have a contract, but if there was an Evergreen thing, it might be helpful to have a motion to say, you know, that because of whatever.
We do, we do have an invoice dated one-three-twenty-twenty-two.
I'll move that we hold that invoice until the contract.
That's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made by Rich, seconded by Bill Clevenger, that we hold payment of the invoice pending contract with MCEDC. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. So Matt's not gonna be here. No, Matt is here. Matt?
Actually, I've been asked if Tracy can just say something first. Thanks, Tracy Fox, President of Culver Visitor Center. I wanted to say this is gonna be Matt's last. Thank you, if not, because when we just made the announcement today and congratulations to him, to be the new executive to that person. And this Matt, who has been very helpful for the visitor center, I think, doing some pretty amazing things. But Matt is absolutely, to me, for good reason, he's going into pre-coding of national travel, which would, you know, people, glad to see him, he's got the day, he's very, very, just appreciate.
Thank you for your time. I made it short based on some advice that tonight might be a long meeting, so that's all. Also glad I didn't heed the advice to not shut up till seven-thirty. But I just wanted to quickly go through some of the things that we are doing. Last month, the redevelopment commission approved a request for reimbursement for several branding and marketing requests, and we are thankful for their support. These included a couple things that you have on the sheet that I cast out. On the front page is a sample of the most recent big magazines ad, and it's basically a whole blank calendar of things that are coming up in the next few months in Culver. We are also hoping to get as much of that onto some like four-by-six magnets, and we received approval to get the magnets that we distributed, basically to retailers, well, the wagon baskets, delivery of various civic events, I think, directly with all the different ways that we can get it out to. But I know they had them a few years ago, and all the retailers carry them. I know every house I went into has them up on the fridge, so we're looking forward, we're gonna work with Bohm printers on that one. And then on the second page, we decided to go ahead and do a second year ad buy with Indianapolis Monthly Magazine. We did this last year when we participated with the decorated showhouse in Indianapolis, which I know it was kind of confusing here, but down there, it got Culver, a lot of great guests. It's the oldest career showhouse and the longest cleaning. And last year, it was a home that had ties to Culver, and so we were able to partner last year. This year, they kept the ad buy the same way, even though they're not partnering with one of the designers to have a presence in one of the rooms. So in Indianapolis Monthly Magazine, in May is also when they have their travel supplement for the summer, so we'll have an ad that goes into that. You can see the ad right there. And then it'll also go into all of the showhouse programs, which are about eight thousand. Something we're very excited about that I mentioned before, and tonight you're gonna hear a little bit more about it, is the paint how even, and that is coming to Culver September twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. I will actually let Jeffrey in a minute explain a little bit more about what all that entails, because he's the expert, but we've been working hard and with his connections and persistence, we've been able to get a very sweet ad deal for Plener Magazine and their digital, their digital marketing, as well as being in three issues of their magazine with advertising. And so first ad that's gonna come out in the April May issue, and then we also have a June July ad, and then a, I guess, September ad, and then obviously the event is in September. We are also very excited that we, along with the library and with the environmental council, we applied last year for a grant, which we did not get for Smithsonian, but they came back to us this year and said they were gonna keep it in Indiana for another year, and they wanted us to have an opportunity to do it, and we're thrilled that we have some updates. And so from July twenty-third to September fourth, we're gonna have a Smithsonian exhibit, museums, for the museums on Main Street program, about waterways and how water affects humans. And so I've been working with both Deb Palmer and Janet over at the library, Deb with the Environmental Fund, and we are very excited that the library's gonna be hosting this. One of their quest or request for the grant is that we try and tie things into the community that have been affected by water, and we found that Kurt Bonniget, through his connections so late, but also with his foundation, has a big environmental push going on within the mayor organization, because he is quite an environmentalist. So through that, we are also, at the same time, hosting from the Bonniget Library in Indianapolis, a Kurt Bonniget exhibit that will also be at the library, and that will run on the same dates. They have a Bonniget speaker that will come up, and so we'll be adding that speaker to the list. We'll have, there'll be a grand opening, there'll be events that go on throughout the Waterways exhibit, and it's really exciting, because it's also sponsored with Indiana Humanities, and they do a lot of help promoting it, everything that Culver will be doing with this through Indiana Humanities, as well as with Smithsonian. So I'm excited that there's lots of positive PR things coming to Culver this summer. We're also working hard on Lake Fest. We just had our fourth meeting, and there seems to be a lot of enthusiasm about that, and I think I will just keep it at that. That's kind of what we've been doing.
Who is in charge of Lake Fest this year?
Andrea. Yep. She's doing a great job. And so helping so far with the communications part of that, but that's going to naturally transition. So, any questions?
Sure.
I just wanna thank Matt for all this work, for always collaborating with the town. You've been great as far as my role as town manager and Amber's role as park superintendent. I really appreciate how you always showed up to update us, and appreciate how you interacted with all of us. I think you did a lot of work to help promote Culver. We saw major uptick after COVID finally ended, and a lot of that work, I think, is coming off in dividends, so I really appreciate everything you did while we were here.
Thank you, Jim. It's been a pleasure. It's not something I ever expected to be doing, and it's turned out to be quite a great thing, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
First.
And I can already say, I feel my face is really red and hot. I haven't worn a sweater in a while. I just got back two days ago from a four-and-a-half month, or four-month, what I call painting travel in Florida. I packed out of doors directly inside, and so I feel better.
Rub it in, rub it in.
Sorry, you wanna wear my sweater, or? So I'm Jeffrey Baumgartner. I'm representing the steering committee of the Culver Paintout, the inaugural that happens, the three-day plein air event, September twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. I would like to take just a second to acknowledge my co-chair, Mary Ann Nussbaum. Thank you so much, for she's been great at opening doors, and we were beginning to go ahead with that to do later. Bob Nowak, who represents certainly himself as a local artist, and he gave me a really wonderful grid carpet tour of a collection that we had, and so thank you. Tracy's here, so Tracy Fox, who represents pretty much everything. She all of her creations, the farmers market, we'll talk about it later, that on a Saturday, we do a quick paint from ten AM to noon. At Farmers Market, it's an airgun start. You probably have anywhere from half of the painters who like to work that quickly, and then immediately goes into the depot there for adjudication and a public art sale. And certainly, Matt has been really instrumental and a really great partner, so I want to say thank you especially to Matt. He did kind of slam dunk identifying and securing the funds that allow us advertisement and promotions in plein air magazine, which we have now coerced as a corporate sponsor and partner. So it's a pretty big move. And then yesterday, I heard that we got a commitment from Fort Wayne Artist Guild, who will serve as kind of a sanctioning event that comes with a check and some cross-promotional things. So we're happy to continue to get not only in the county, where the event is county-wide, but we plan on getting into Fort Wayne, South Bend, I'm in Michigan City with mine, so we have the Newland Painters there, and certainly Chicago, so we look for a lot of participation. So that three-day event is probably, in its first year, gonna attract anywhere from forty to sixty artists. We don't know just yet, registration in May. We think probably easily three. They will compete over three days. They register on a Friday, Saturday, all day long, including Saturday morning, then half the day on Sunday, turn in one work for adjudication, and then the public comes in for an art sale. So you'll see sixty artists descending on the area and paying the delight. They are competing through five thousand dollars in awards and purchase prizes. I'll say very quickly, for example, what a purchase prize, we expect probably anywhere from eight to ten of those. It could be a lake property, it could be a home in town, it could be a local business, but the owner proprietor puts up an amount of money, often it's five hundred dollars, that becomes the purchase prize. You can find anywhere from ten to twelve to fifteen painters descend on that property. And then the owner proprietor has a choice of any number of those paintings for themselves, and then that prize goes directly to the artist. So that's really a great way to get some of these prizes right back into, and to get participation, the higher-end artists. We have two subcommittees we're gonna form, or are in process of forming. One is charged the task of identifying painting locations, including some of those purchase prize locations, so that's gonna take some time. Now that I'm back, I can hit the ground running and start to help identify those. They get compiled into a catalog of sorts, so maybe a picture of the property, maybe directed from the owner, maybe any kind of permissions that we need, and then they can find these properties and paint locations. So we made it county-wise, that we might be able to find like an apple orchard, we can call it some rural, but really, we're gonna be in the Culver environs. I'm excited about that. And the other is, lastly, is a subcommittee to help identify some artist accommodations, for lack of better. So maybe somebody has a room over a garage, that they would play host to an artist over a couple of days. And I know a lot of the events that I participate in around the country, a lot of times, an artist will then contribute a painting for their stay, so it really becomes a nice, I think, a nice opportunity. So I can take any questions, otherwise, thank you, and we're just really excited about continuing to muck on. But again, Matt, I know we lose him somewhat soon. He's gonna support, continue to support, but might not have him on table today, so again, Matt, thank you so much for that support.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Council, have any questions for Jeff?
Do you have the locations that you're identifying, the public locations, or supported by like an entity, like a nonprofit?
No, absolutely not. Of course, in fact, that's really what we're gonna start to look into. Yeah. I think, yes.
Yeah, I'm thinking of like a popular spot, like the Culver sign in the park. I could see a nonprofit supporting you with sponsoring a prize for painting that spot, for example.
Yeah, I think that's.
Lake, obviously, the lake front with that sign in front of it.
And I think we're trying to do a steering committee meeting at the end of March. We're gonna start to, you know, really get the to-do list, but I think from, we'll call it April one on, you'll probably hear from me a lot, we'll be looking at those kind of opportunities. So again, come to you, and we can certainly look at, might be contacted, but I think it's a great opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I would just like to add that if any of you have any suggestions already about places for like housing or venues or anything like that, that you wanna feed any of the committee members, we'll be happy to accept your information or your ideas.
I was gonna say, if you've got a website, or if you've got an email that you wanna put out there for the housing thing, that they can reply back to, you know, either through the visitor center or Howrey, you know, Amber, you guys decide you wanna do it.
Right, right now, it's on the visitor center website. We haven't opened the registration yet.
Okay.
But this information comes from the Plener Magazine ad. You have the ad that's in the pack that I gave you. It has our website, and I thought about a placeholder there with basic information. And when this information comes, then we'll be able to have this guy show.
And related to that, there will be a dedicated site. We just don't have that. I'm hoping for April first, certainly May first, because that's when you registration. Artists will then find that with a link, certainly from visitor center, get to that page specifically to the paintout, be able to register and get all the information.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jeffrey's also helping us. We made Lake Fest, as you know, and the visitor center Art is in the Air, and he's also working on some other ideas to maybe add some other components to maybe Lake Fest or other events in the summer to get people aware of what it is. Maybe cut three or four others that Lake Fest may have, maybe paint out, and stuff like that. So we've got a lot of ideas and still collaborating.
That was good. Next on the agenda is peer install removal contract.
Yes. You have in front of you, I handed out this contract here. It, it looks lengthy, but it's because it starts with the original, addendum one, addendum two, and we now have an addendum three. And basically, Amber and I met with Tim Yojas because we wanted to tighten up significantly on the install and also taking out with yours. And he was gracious enough to work with us on that. We proposed a two thousand dollar increase over previous years to make up for tightening up the schedule rather significantly. The other major change is that we wanted to end the contract this time, not with the fall season, but with the spring season, since technically a three-and-a-half-year contract, because then if we go to bid this out, the people bidding on it would be able to see the peers already installed instead of a pile of yours, essentially. So we propose in this contract, paying fifty thousand for that twenty-twenty-five spring installation, because it's sort of a one-off on this contract. Everything else is references past addendums, the original contract, how it gets paid out, how it came. One eighth installment, four in the spring, four in the fall. Amber, am I forgetting anything?
I don't think so. So essentially, it's coming from a twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, one hundred and thirty dollars to twenty-six thousand, and like Ginny said, the reasoning for that increase is the stricter dates for removal, install, we made them quicker, the rain dates, and then stricter penalties, it doesn't get installed on time, we increased that amount. And then also, we haven't raised this price for six years, so like taking into consideration as well, I, I think additional two thousand as well, having all those people.
Yeah, for the tweaks we made, that's kind of what we think is that addition. And then we also, the weather requirement, like where you get a grace period if the weather's bad, we talked to Tim about doing that on more like a daily basis, where he's gonna guarantee a start time of April fifteenth. If April fifteenth that day is bad weather, he gets a grace day for that, instead of having this year, fifteen-day grace period thing. And basically, he just needs Amber's approval and her absence mine to get a grace day for that particular day. And Tim describes in great detail what can be bad weather. For him, it can be extremely cold, it can be windy, it could be thunderstorms, it could be any sort of nature event, or something that would make him or one of the staff unsafe to work in that condition, and we would obviously grant him that. So we did change that sort of grace period policy.
And, and the date changes are due to, we, we had a very strangely, the same date for peers to be installed as the same date for our peer renters decent for, to access the peers, which doesn't make much sense, because you can't get a peer and a lift install on the same day, so it gives time for our lift installers, about five days to get their lift in place.
Council, have any question?
Amber has, I had him after team reviewed and some back and forth. He has signed two copies. I've got one for council, one for him. So that's, those are not in your book right now, but they're signed by Tim.
Council, have any questions?
That one's for him.
I guess my only question is, is this a line item in your budget, part budget, or, I mean, you've got room for the twenty-six?
We did increase, like, the peer fix line item, but otherwise, I would assume we would have gone with what the other contract had listed out. But I think, you know, the, yeah.
Is this gonna put you over budget in that line item, or, obviously it is, or?
It would for the, the peer install and the peer removal line item.
Okay.
But to the degree that we put into the peer fixes line item, which is like underneath peers, I know we put more in, but I don't know the specific amount.
Twenty-five thousand peer installation and then two thousand dollars in peer repairs.
Okay, so you can cover.
Yes.
It's worth eight thousand.
Yeah.
Just trying to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hey, is there a motion to accept the Culver Peer Service Contract?
Second.
Motion been made by Bill Hamm.
And authorized in the president's.
Thank you, everybody.
I know all of you.
Yeah, we're all, we're all on the hook. Motion made by Bill Hamm, seconded by Rich, to approve the peer install removal contract. Addendum number three is presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
And I thank you, Jim, for the phone calls.
Next on the agenda is MACOG contract for comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I sent you a copy of the MACOG contract at our last meeting, but didn't want you to vote on it, so just one, because I wanted to decide which option, because they gave us multiple options. The one that I'm recommending is a hybrid one. I put in your town manager's report what that option is. Basically, MACOG with, with the town and myself to facilitate your four-phase planning process. It's facilitating the steering committee, creating the vision and value statement, develop some natural strategy, create a future development plan, summarizing priority action plan. I would be assisting them with creating some of the narrative, and the summary of the final plan. MACOG would develop public engagement strategies, including branding materials, websites, social media, public surveys, and outreach opportunities. They would utilize custom branding from the initial public engagement to create a visually appealing final plan, updated webpage, and assist us through the public approval process. For that hybrid approach, it would be twenty thousand. The other options in that contract were for them to do less and me do more for fourteen thousand, or we could have had them do even a lot more for, I believe it was twenty-four thousand five hundred, or twenty-seven thousand five hundred, I can't remember. But there's also an option for us to do trail branding and wayfinding signage for an additional fifteen hundred, which is a steal. So I put that in the town manager's report as something to add in. They would do that, we're working on the comprehensive plan with us. So I'm looking for approval for the twenty thousand. And these are not to exceed amounts from MACOG, so it could be, you know, end up doing more work, and they do less, they may.
So they're, they're timing the materials not to exceed?
Yeah.
When is the last timing of the?
Two thousand and fourteen. We did a five-year action plan that led us to Stella, so we hit the high priorities in that.
You can call what you're looking at. I thought we had a number.
Well, we had a bunch of it, about thirty thousand between this and the financial plan that we're hoping to do when this is done, and we have a list of priority projects have. And we have a list of priority projects, have the financial analysis done post comp planning. So between, I believe about $30,000. And that financial plan may get pushed into next year too, just based on the rate, you know, how long it takes for that to get here.
So is there a motion to approve the MACOG contract for comprehensive plan in the amount of 20,000, not to exceed $20,000?
I I would, I'll make the. Go ahead. That we approved the the MACOG combined plan of around $10,000 for the comprehensive plan plus $1,500 for the wayfinding. But as a materials not to exceed contract.
Motion been made by Rich, seconded by Sally, that we approve MACOG contract comprehensive plan for not to exceed total of $21,500. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Town managers' report.
All right. The good news on that MACOG deal is that I think last time we did a top plan, it was $50,000.
Right, yeah.
2014, so I'm happy that we can do it for that price. First thing is the electric vehicle charging station. Bob's team has been working on installing that as they got better. Still need to get it up and working some software standpoint that should be taken care of soon. So people will be able to charge their cars. State Ridge ten sidewalks of Jefferson Street, please schedule their pre-final walk through with Troyer Group. And that will take place on March 16. Lake Mac Space Two, we are getting ready to ramp back up with area. And we're also having a meeting with them on March 16 to schedule getting back onto Lake Mac Space Two. While I'm talking about that today, I don't know, Bill, if they copied you or not, but a related issue is I received a letter from Tim Oldham and Randy and Joey Dreschler.
Rich Lett.
They both live on 409 Plymouth Street and 411 Plymouth Street. Yeah, so I think at some point, well, I want to pass this on to Jim and we'll want to respond. But I wanted to talk to Troyer Group first, because there is drainage solutions built into the Plymouth Street trail plans. And I'd like to have Troyer Group and Bob and myself sit down and take a look at the drainage they've put in. And to the engineer about if we need to do something in addition to that on this alley that they're referring to in the letter. And then have Jim help us draft a response of some sort.
Do you want me to read this letter in the minutes?
You can if you want to.
I think we should probably. Letters dated March the 7, 2022, from Oldham. And Oldham, a consulting and construction management company, addressed to the town of Culver, 200 East Washington Street, Culver, Indiana, 46511. Attention Culver Town Council regarding drainage problem. Dear council members, a drainage problem exists in the alley between 409 South Limits and 411 South Limits. Over the past 15 years, verbal requests to the street department to remedy the potholes in the alley have been met with the filling of the holes with stone and on several occasions grading with tobacco. And in the last several years, the street department has applied street millings to correct the problem. However, this continued buildup has diverted the runoff onto our properties flooding the garage at 409 and the yard and crawl space of 411. With the Culver Trail passing in front of this alley, a greater backup of runoff seems likely. We are requesting the town to first regrade the alley to eliminate flooding. And second, to install a stormwater drain in an appropriate position to eliminate future flooding problems. Please keep us advised advised of the town's solution to this problem. Respectively submitted, Tim Oldham and Randy and Joey Dreschler.
There are stormwater inlets and drainage along Plymouth Street because of this rail. So I think as part of that response, we'll have to point to that design. But again, I'd rather get with Troyer Group and Bob before we respond. And I I think we could probably run any communication with them by council and attorney first, if that makes sense.
Sounds good.
We'll need to discuss it further with Amber. Okay, so that was it on that Lake Mac Space Two. Skipping down to the water project proposal from Midwestern. Contacted the academy's attorney again on the easement. And unfortunately, he is out because of a death in the family. So I won't probably hear back until somehow next week on that. This proposal for new well. We heard from Mr. McGee. And he had been communicating with Mr. Collins about this project on the property there. They do want some language changed, and I've requested what that specific language needs to be. Basically, they want to know that the easement will not interfere with your development. So I'm going to run that by Jim before I bring it in front of you. So I will get that to you as soon as I work that out with them.
Got it.
Because they kind of explained what they want, but I want the actual language to come from someone on that end.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll forward you the emails.
Was there enough space in there to put houses?
Yeah, it's a big property. Alley behind Ohio Street, obviously that hasn't changed yet. I will check in with them to see if they're ready to begin now that weather is better. Haven't heard on the community crossing grants yet, so we'll let you know how that goes. Under my updates, I'm skipping over Park, et cetera. 415 Lake Shore Drive, you obviously know what's going on there. Thank you all for listening to the public hearing. That's the plan you just approved MACOG's contract with us. M C E D C, obviously, they have their meeting on Thursday, so I will let you know what we hear back from them. Their attorney and Laura, we're going to work on that contract, Jim and I, so. Under special events, there is coming up the St. Mary's in the Lake Knights of Columbus. They do two different weekends on the intersections for donations. I'm not asking you to approve that tonight. That just came into us. So it's circulating among the department heads. I put it in there, so don't forget about it. Probably a task force, I started working on the RFP. I've had some questions for Jim and for Scott Rudd, because I'm working on that. It's very complicated. And I am taking my time about it. But I'm hoping if the rest of this week wasn't quite done, I mean, too. Get a draft of that so that I can get it to Jim and the consultant before I put it back in front of the task. And then once, once they've all done their review, we'll bring it to council and see what's seen. Marshall County Crossroads, don't really have anything new to report there, other than we are all meeting and trying to work on the grant applications as well as initiative in general. And then, of course, annexation of Tamarack property. This goes along with the housing development in the south of the town. And I had a couple of the CRC members request to have a meeting with Burke Richardson and/or Al Collins or both. And they have gotten back to me. They are willing to meet on March 28. So I'm gonna send Karen an email, copy CRC and all of you. If you want to attend that, it's going to be a work session. So we'll have to advertise it as a work session for CRC. If you guys want to make it a mutual work session, you can do that too. But we've got a couple CRC members that want more detail at this stage, since they are in the architectural drawing stage. I think by the 28th, they'll have more to bring. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Jenny.
I I passed on a five o'clock figure, but I passed it fast, but I literally asked him, Michael, for the land commission meeting. So I'll I'll get you guys an update on that when we start.
Okay, moving on, department head reports. I know Jeff's not going to be here tonight. Terry, are you on for fire?
Yes. I just have, I just have one thing. The gear that we ordered last year, your packs finally came in, this was coming in January, they came in, we put them together. We are in the process of getting trained on them, which will probably happen in the next three weeks. And after that, they will go into service. And that's all I have.
Come back. Wayne? You could leave now.
Turn off the lights.
Well, if you quit talking, you know, in your bull session, it might not be an hour. That's what I mean.
How are you, patrolling on foot?
They're taking some bikes that goes off the rack that they've accumulated. So if you see them riding around that. Yeah, where's your golf cart?
I say awards.
Anything else, sir? Thank you. Park?
Um, I'm just in the process right now, conducting interviews with Summer, hoping to have that all wrapped up by the end of March. And hoping in April to have our orientation for the summer and start getting the ball rolling. I have all of my peer spaces, Just He's boats, kayak rack, all full, paid for, minus two payments of new renters. So we're all settled there as well. That is all for me.
Very good, thank you. Bob, are you on for utilities?
I do have something to report for him if you can't get on. There, I put in the town manager report that our digester blower is gone to on the brice. I think I gave you a heads up. This is a very expensive piece of equipment. Hard to figure out if there's a temporary suspension to keep it falling along, even though a new one is promised. Don't currently have an idea of how long it'll take to get a new one. It it could cause some little related issues at some point down the chain. There's another heads up for those of you who live on the south of the town.
Jenny, what are they talking about ballpark on a new adjustment?
At one point, a few years back, I think when Bob looked into this, they were over $200,000. The tournament has only a few.
Right.
We may have to change. Maybe it's a good thing that easement's taking so long, because we may have to do this project instead of that one. Karen is well on the loop. Bob is communicating regularly with both of us.
Okay. Let's go back. Terry?
Yeah, can you hear me?
He is, but yeah, he tells me he's unmuted himself. One last caller.
They're just saying no report or type no report.
Give an update on the air packs.
Oh, okay.
All right.
I just wanted to update the board on on the new Scotty Air Packs that were ordered last year. They're in, we've got them put together. We started training on them. Within three weeks' time, we should be trained enough on them to put them in the surface. And that's about all I really have.
Thanks a lot, Terry. Moving on, clerk's report.
Speaking of those spare packs. They're one of the, one of the claims to approve. Actually, there's two in front of it, BS Engineering for $2,218. And that is for contractual services on some engineering work they're doing for the community crossings grant. Miller Insurance, $20,585, and that is the workers' comp policy that we have for our employees. And then municipal emergency services, that is the, those are the air packs. So the cost in all is $148,145.85. However, that is split with Mar, we split that with Marley.
Right.
So I went ahead and paid it and she will be reimbursing. But if you could approve those claims, that would be wonderful.
Move. Is there a second? Motion made by Bill Clevinger, seconded by Bill Ham to approve claims over 2,000. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
The annual report, Bill Clevinger came in and reviewed it on the February 25th. The 24th, it was submitted on Friday, February 25th, which was a couple days in advance of the deadline of February 28. So public's welcome to view it. It can be found at the Gateway Portal on www.in.gov backslash DLGF. It's available there or contact me. I'm happy to provide a copy. But I just want you all to be notified that it was filed, and I did provide you all a copy as well. If you want to make a motion to accept it, you can do that. I think her statement of account says the fact that I've had somebody review it and I've made you all aware, provided a copy and make up everything.
First, I'd like to mention and commend Karen. During my review was without exception. She did an exceptional job. And I could find nothing that was of order.
Very good.
I'll make a motion that we approve the annual report.
Motion made by Bill Clevinger, seconded by Chris West to approve the annual report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I did in an email, or the email I was sent to you the other day, I provided you a list of outstanding warrants. Those would be from 2019 that with your approval, I will go ahead and cancel and then receive back into the debtful funds. And the total is $160.32.
Who sent you one, water bill one, Karen, that you were talking about?
I think it was.
Misferring to an account, an active account.
They sent you the wrong one. I sent you one from 2020 then.
Okay.
Now, this is, there's four of them. There's four checks, $160.32, $134.32 would go to the park. Eight dollars for water, eight dollars to sewer and a $10 water deposit. That was the cashed. I'll resend that up. And if you don't want, if you want to wait until next week.
Yeah, let's wait, we'll wait.
The side mark program is usually April 1st is when we open up applications. Bob had come to me and suggested that we might consider adjusting the reimbursement rates. Since we haven't done that, we haven't done that since I've been here. So that's 10 years. But we haven't had a chance to discuss.
But we haven't had a chance to discuss, I provided him information as far as what, how the reimbursement rates are falling versus what people are paying for. I guess it's up to you, we can, at this point, I either need to delay, delay submitting applications for a month while we decide whether or not we're going to up those reimbursement rates or go ahead with the April first deadline and just put that information out there. Either way, it, it makes no difference to me, I just want to get that information out to the public because all of a sudden, it's the middle of May or it's the middle of March and time is flying by, so.
Those are council's wishes.
If we were, if we were to publish it with the existing rates and we were to change them at a later meeting, it would just be, they would go up and not down, so.
They would be reimbursed more, yes.
Yes, so I mean, if you want, I guess my thought is, if you wanted to open the program up as it exists now and then it would give us time to assess whether we want to increase those rates and they would just go up, not down, so anybody who signed up for it would get more, not less, correct?
That's, that's up to you, and I will say we budgeted twelve thousand dollars for this here, so.
You got a wish?
Somebody also thought on it or what? I would suggest we publish the program with the existing rates and we work on looking at those. See if we want to increase them or can increase them. Yeah.
Second, second. Motion's been made to go ahead and publish the rates as we have in the past and they need to be adjusted upward to later date. You know, after review, we won't do so. Any discussion? Question made by Rachel, seconded by Bill Ham, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And so this is how spring goes in Culver, we open up the sidewalk applications April first, so if you want to redo your sidewalk, I will make those applications available. I'll get the applications out of email and we'll accept them via email again this year unless someone doesn't have email and they can look at it. I think that's how we've done it the last two years and it's worked out fairly well. But I'll get information out through the media, being from Gull River Lake and our Facebook page. But then, following the sidewalk program deadline, we have, we have the town wagon sales, those will be April twenty-eighth and April twenty-ninth and thirtieth, Friday and Saturday, I believe. Second, I guess, and I saw whatever. The twentieth and thirtieth. So you'll have to get information into me if you want to be included on the map on April twenty-sixth. And just a heads up, because people will start asking then in August, the fall sales will be September twenty-third and twenty-fourth. So once your, whatever stuff you have left over from your yard sale, you can take and donate to the Lions Club Flea Market because that's the following weekend, May seventh, and then whatever doesn't get sold. And either one of those, you can take to Bob on the town wagon cleanup on May fourteenth. Make its way, for my house, you just make its way across town. And that's all I have.
Question back on the sidewalk. And that's more, I've just got a question about on Winfield where they took out the tree that busted up the curb. Is Bob gonna redo that?
Was that part of the, the?
It was, it was the tree that they took out on Greg Caudell's house because of not agreeing on the curb?
Yeah.
That shouldn't be great, that, I don't think that should be, is it Greg responsible to put in for a sidewalk thing?
I don't think we ever made a decision on it, I think there was discussion of it potentially happening. It's like a, it was a special project or whatever.
I'm just, I'm asking the question, I mean, I can get with Bob or?
Yeah, I don't know, I guess if, if you want us to do it, we can get a quote from Rocky. We don't, we don't work sidewalk ourselves, but yeah, we can get a quote for it.
I mean, unless Greg wants to redo his sidewalk, I don't think he should have to pay for the curb when he took the tree down.
Right now. Now you can't, you couldn't do an ADA sidewalk onto, you know, from his sidewalk onto the sidewalk sits like the
Right.
Where the tree was.
Where the tree was, yeah.
And then there's a curb, I think.
Does his property intercept the permits?
Yes.
Yes.
And I didn't know whether, I, I didn't know whether it was included in.
It was included in the tree commission.
In the
Part of the trail projects.
Yeah, because.
I believe so, because it's on that side.
I don't, I don't think it's in the, I don't think it's in the trail project. It was in the tree commission to take it out because of, because of the busted curb.
Yeah.
Way up and.
Yeah. You could almost skateboard and jump from it.
Yes.
So you want me to get a quote to have that sidewalk replaced?
Well, the curb, the curb.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's check into it and then.
We've taken trees out before and I don't know that we've ever replaced curb or sidewalk. To my knowledge.
Right, but it's the tree, the tree was the cause of the curb on the sidewalk. Just asking a question.
Yeah, because I know, remember we moved a whole lot of trees and like the gal on Main Street was upset because she said the trees were going to cry. I don't, we took trees out of the, and granted, some of them weren't busting up sidewalks, some were. But I don't think we replaced sidewalk or curb as we did that.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
General Assembly closed today, and did they pass any of those bills you were worried about?
I have been so busy, I haven't paid attention.
I was busy with the meeting, they really got closed today or tomorrow.
Yeah, I know. So I'm not sure what's happened with personal property, I have a feeling that's probably one that'll go out to the last minute.
Yeah, they'll close that out right before they adjourn.
Yeah, there were some end of the domain bills that were of concern. I'm not sure where those ended up, they kind of came together, left some language concerning language in the the committee report. And then there was a TIF bill that allowed the I E, the Indiana Development Corporation to do essentially TIF areas, not within corporate limits, but out in county.
And it's real big projects, maybe like two billion dollar projects or something.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, it, it probably would affect more metropolitan areas than us. But it might limit us in what we can do because of that. But honestly, I haven't seen any updates, so. But as soon as I do, I can forward them.
Attorney's report? Attorney's report, I don't really have much. We're still on for the March fifteenth meeting with Buzz.
No.
That's all.
March twenty-second now, has to speak at an event on the fifteenth. And we were going to set it up as a five o'clock work session.
And you still want me to attend that?
Or no, executive, I'm sorry.
Executive, yes, it's the executive session.
So March twenty-second at five o'clock, that's the move.
Before the regular
I wasn't going to be here because I was going to send Jeanette in.
It's okay, I can update you, I'll
Okay.
That's right.
Want me to send her here by?
Yeah, I think we should have representation.
March fifteenth, though, is still the scheduled Zoom hearing in Marshall Circuit Court for the county and the township's argument to dismiss the V I P ventures lawsuit against the county, the township and the Culver Fire Department and
On four fifteen.
Whoever else on four fifteen. And then, I was going to remind you that on March twenty-second, Jeanette's coming. I'll give her good news that she can come at five.
Jim, I'll send her some history and background at the Buzz meeting.
Okay.
It's like, that'll be brand new to her.
Yeah, that'll be brand new to her, so, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the room or online present for utility shut off or ordinance violation? Hearing your scene, none moving on to citizen input, anyone in the room for citizen input? Is anyone online for citizen input? Hearing your scene, none moving on to council issues. Rich?
Nothing.
Nope.
Nothing, thank you.
I have nothing either.
Sally?
Although I do have some comments that I, I can get together with the Jenny. Regards to the property there on just flooding.
Oh, okay.
Because there used to be six inches of standing water there three years. I mean, this didn't just occur.
No, no. William?
I have nothing.
I want to take a moment to congratulate Amber, who's going to take on the director role for the visitor center. Amber will, Amber will remain our parks superintendent, but she's also going to have the part-time job of this new position, which I think aligns nicely with her full-time position with the town. The visitor center has worked hard to bring visitors and tourists to Culver, among the other things they do. We know the impact that has, that it has had on our economy and on local businesses. Amber and the previous director, Matt Keaty, worked well together to organize marketing activities, events and programming that draw people to Culver and other activities related to tourism and economic development. I think Amber will do a great job of balancing her responsibilities in both these positions to bring some efficiencies to both roles and to the people on the various boards and committees whose mission is to have the same kind of impact. I want to wish her well and know that the other council members support me in that message. Several of our employees have, have part-time jobs and I applaud all of them for their work ethic. I also appreciate the sacrifice it takes to work the hours. Many of our employees are full-time people from other communities. We are fortunate to retain talented people we have because we also know that workforce issues are having a strong impact on rural communities. So thank you very much for agreeing to take on the job and.
Thank you, yeah, thank you all for your support, I appreciate it all, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.